Mr. So meeting is live.
Okay. All this July twenty fifth meeting of the rally county commission of order, please everybody join with a bunch of allegiance. Bledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
And this are one of our, I'm gonna say these are favorite, our favorite meeting of the year, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I won't get moving along here and start off with public comments. I think Evan's got something again.
Good morning, Evan Bennoh, Public Works, just a final reminder, transportation is closed on Saturday.
Yeah, next to replace the scale.
Yes.
Karen. Yeah. Nice, sounds good. You have any other public comments this morning? Okay, seeing now we'll move on to what we've all been waiting for this morning, so.
Almost, I was.
Oh, did you really? Yeah.
Tried.
Okay.
Yeah, I walked in just in time.
Oh, so everybody got, everybody already got there except for me, okay, okay.
You want me to bring you to you?
Yeah, you can put him right there. Oh, he's wrapped up?
Yep.
Yep.
Is he breathing?
We could take a picture.
Yeah.
And then we might have to have a picture, I mean that also, as long as he can breathe.
You guys go ahead, go around the back there.
I make them do this all the time.
Right on in.
Yeah. Or we can push that to just a little farther out.
Way there too.
Okay. Okay. Everybody ready? And one, two, three, one, two, three.
Yeah, let's do one.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you so much. My name is Alexis.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Enjoy.
We will.
Thank you. Good luck this week.
Thank you.
Stay cool.
Okay, so moving along then, we'll get over to commissioner comments. Uh, Commissioner Kennedy.
Okay, well. Oh, Monday at promedia noon was the intergovernmental luncheon, as Speaker was Amanda Webb discussing the work on our content plan. Um, Monday evening, Kennedy, Manhattan Catbackers, and Speaker was Gene Taylor. He does a really good job, but he touched on several subjects with most of the time, talking about that lawsuit settlement that they're gonna have to pay the athletes. It's supposed to cost about twenty-two million a year, and there's still a lot of questions about how it's gonna happen, who gets the money, how it's distributed, and. But he did a good job giving information, he was entertaining, he said.
Yeah.
He, sometimes comes off kind of dry, but he is, but in that setting, he was, he was, he was pretty funny, told some good stories. Uh, Tuesday night was Riley City Meeting, and, you know, the Mercury had already posted an article about the reduced speed we had approved, and it showed up on Facebook and. Received more complaints and compliments. Uh, he said, the speed reduction was okay, but what about sidewalks? And, you know.
Nice song.
I know, and that, well, and so the city did, the city council looked at possible sidewalks and some, some options for sidewalks.
Yeah, I got an email from a resident there talking about, it was supposed to be on the west side of the street over there, and I think we're having a separate discussion.
Well, yeah, this is working.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The, oh, you know, the speed limit, I know who that was, because he called me and I said, I know you've said that, I said, we're working on this side, I'll work, you know, he just. I mean, the speed's reduced, he just thinks we need to flash light because people don't reduce speed.
Yeah, I'll be interested to see how that, how that goes, but yeah. He's more to follow.
He, I gotta call, you know, I'm sure the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then yesterday afternoon gave Brian Parker a tour of North County, Rhode, Rhode County East of Tullabree, along the, along the lake. Um, some of the problem areas we've been discussing, that he can be looking into to, and kind of giving you a background on stuff, had a good tour in. And then just a general discussion as we drive around about how the county works and stuff, had a, it's a good trip. Good meeting all of that.
Okay, well, Monday afternoon, I too attended the intergovernmental luncheon, um, same thing, as Commissioner McKinley. Uh, meeting was well attended, all entities gave updates on their organizations and activities. Um, they did say, did comment again that the county would be taking over those luncheons next, next year, so. I was thinking about different places we could have, stuff like that, anyway. Uh, that evening, I attended the Manhattan City Manager finalist candidates community reception over at the Discovery Center. Um, each of the four finalists did a short speech, um, then talked, talked with people or tables who had various questions, so it was kind of like a. You know, go to different tables to meet them, um, but, uh, let's see, I don't know. This mayor Susan, Susan Adamcheck gave a short presentation on how the process worked moving forwards towards a decision, hopefully this week. It hasn't been made yet.
I think they had special meeting last, did last night.
Tuesday and.
Sorry, they were good candidates, so it'd be a hard decision to make, so. There are two men, two women, but you know, there were some K-State people too, so a couple of them. Anyway, Tuesday, had a doctor's appointment and then spent some time downtown here going in the off, in the office, going over paperwork and some projects. Um, that evening, I attended an event for Kansas Senator Reddy at the historic depot. Uh, well attended and former state senator Lana O'Leary was main speaker and talked to people. Wednesday, I spent some time in the office, going over today's agenda and documents, and then I voted early in the primary election. Uh, they were pretty quiet over there. I, I hope they get a little bit better traffic in the future, that's all I have.
Okay, well, for me, I missed Monday afternoon's intergovernmental because I had a Microsoft team summary call with NACOS Veterans and Military Services Committee. Um, to go through some of the policy resolution discussions that took place at the annual conference and exposition that happened in Hilltop County, Florida last week. Uh, Rachel Mackey, our legislative assistant for the committee, went through, reviewed the resolutions ever passed and. Uh, the policy items ever discussed, and we'll still need some direction and guidance on those for the twenty twenty-four and twenty-five cycle. That starts till September, so it was through September till July, that's the cycle for those committees, so. Um, we also have a new chair for this next term, Commissioner Sid Conklin from Randolph County, Missouri, so a little closer than Minnesota this year. And, uh, they'll be discussing vice chair positions and stuff too, and have applied for one of them, so we'll see how it goes. Uh, Tuesday afternoon, attended the board of directors meeting for Pony Mental Health via Zoom. Somehow wasn't able to get connected to the finance committee meeting that happened earlier, so I missed part of that, but. However, during the regular meeting, um, Chief Financial Officer Lindsay Miller discussed the fiscal year twenty twenty-five agency budget. It was passed and approved by the board, uh, Mike Raiskalla gave his usual chief financial officer's reports. Also got a marketing and development report from Dietrich Storman. Um, lots of stuff typically goes on with Pony towards the end of the year, and they're still working and sorting through that. Committee reports included a draft review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, um, from the Finance Oversight Committee. And other business included a resignation, um, we have a resignation from the board of directors, and we'll be looking to replace that. And discussions on distributing the county and city sign-up sheets for, uh, the upcoming recovery month, so. Uh, we'll probably be expecting that shortly, so, and that's, um, other than just working this week, that's basically all I got.
Ready for business commissioners?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley County Employee Action Form, Special Hunter Booker, Brittany Bourne, and Emily Grosswick as on-call juvenile. Uh, intake officers for community corrections, and also Roxanne Pinkman, Casey as administrative assistant in the attorney's office. And we have Casey Keller, Linda Preston, and Breckin Wilkinson as intern volunteer for the health department. Those are Casey Kelch's volunteer firefighter. All three signed, please, lots of them.
Oh, forgot to mention condolences. A little lost, Mr. Panasonic.
That thing has been in office longer than me, one of the few things around here, longer than me.
Yo.
But I kept it and used it until that very day.
I had one kind of similar, but it was an Emerson, not a penis. You know, make them.
Can't say that we don't try to get our tax dollars worth out of things, at least some of us.
Yeah. It will be missed.
Yeah, I kept moving it to the two different windows, trying to get better reception, and just finally. Gave up, I was hoping it would last as long as me, but it didn't quite make it.
I don't think those old Kmart Sears deep freezes. They'll outlive all of us.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure.
Kevin Hensler's comment was my favorite, and she said.
Yeah, please. I did see that, yes.
Even had an old employee's name, you know, those old punch, that three punch people, but label makers, the old fashioned ones had Kelly's name on the back, which she was in the clerk's office when I came over. Yeah, I know when people walk in my office and they see that radio sitting there, they probably thought, what?
Yeah, I was thinking about jumping on eBay and seeing if I could find one for sale or something to replace it for you.
I bet you did.
Yeah, I haven't gone on there yet, but I might do that.
Still technically works, but reception is not good.
You put an antenna on it.
Yeah, same thing.
You know, wire clothes hanger with some aluminum foil.
Yeah, I really didn't want to get rid of it, I kept moving it back and forth to windows, trying to get better reception.
I have an old radio, I don't know what brand it is, but it's in my storm shelter, so far it's still working, even in the storm tornado shelter. Know what I can do without it.
I'll bet that radio is nineteen eighties vintage.
Yeah, it is.
I'd like, I'd like, I'd like this, um, garage. Where's my grandpa's?
So you might even have the, it wasn't even anything digital on it, it had the flip numbers on it.
Oh, yeah, I remember those, I remember those. Brittany and Ashlyn probably have never heard of it.
They're going to, I have no idea what they're talking about.
Brittany was just waiting for your comment.
Their real question is, what's a radio?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just dreamed that.
Well, I'm glad, when I was sitting on the cabin next to his, it's, uh, I'm flying her, listening to the ball, listening to baseball.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somehow, I hear these, I've got it out in the garage, it works, neat.
We listen to K-State games back when Mitch Holtes was the voice of the Wildcats.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we see that. Fred, Fred White.
Yeah. Listen now, Paul Splitter, the team up for the world.
For K-State, right?
Oh.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I used to do Royals games too. It's split off.
When Breckin earned, when they, you know, the press box was clear, paying out for the ceiling. And students know, just for the game, they'd always holler five for it, he'd get up and wait to it, so really.
Remember on TV, and they had great club sports, whatever, using on the big eight games.
Yeah.
Thirteen for the sports, yeah.
Yep, I remember the K-State basketball, they were still at A-herne when I was in college. That's second, I worked on the career that actually, I've, I've worked there at A-herne, uh, for a while, and we actually recruited. Put up the bleachers and sit down in the court and took out the court, after four games and.
I've seen one game, second to last game versus Oklahoma, and he, oh, and orange.
Yeah, I was even sweeping the floors at halftime.
Oh, you wanted that one?
Yeah.
Uh.
These big old mops.
Uh-huh, big old brooms, yeah, yeah, sure, for sure.
We'd always have bets, because there was always two.
Mm-hmm.
You'd always have bets, who's gonna win?
Who'd win?
You know.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's when you realize how tall those basketball players were, when you're down on the same level as them, it's like. Need a motion commissioner to approve payroll and accounts payable?
I would make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
Second, it's seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable in favor?
All right.
Right.
All three signed, please. And commissioners, as, uh, Commissioner Focu brought up, the great, uh. Hosting of the intergovernmental luncheons is ours turn, uh, we're not new to this. Always been Cindy Cabral that organizes everything and arranges everything, it's actually gonna have Cindy and Vivian work on it this year, and Cindy will be the. One that gets everyone registered and all that, and Vivian will be our onsite person. Uh, got a list of all the places that we've handled it since ninety-seven, all entities.
How man, we're still. Working.
Um, Mrs. Clyde's is not.
Okay.
All the rest of them are.
Who's that?
It was, I think it was over there.
Yeah, it was over where, uh, it was the old Sterling Stockade. And before it moved over here, it was over there next to the Best Western, it was actually Clyde, it was Clyde's wife, who used to, he explained in the journey of the Clides.
So the, the most frequently used place was a Holiday Inn at the campus, and of course, things changed every, of course, everything changed after twenty twenty. So, we've got a list of places that we put together yesterday, if you guys have a list of ideas of where you want us to check into, we're gonna get. List the locations that have enough parking, enough seating, and see what their catering options are, we're gonna try and keep it around fifteen dollars a plate. And so if you have suggestions, you want us to contact Vivian, and Cindy, you're gonna be working on contacting people and see if. They're willing to host us and what their cost will be.
Okay.
So you have a list, you said?
Uh, all the hotel places, venues, of course, and then talked about the one.
Bluemont?
Now, over that, the city, was it the city that?
Blue.
Oh, Mr. Kay.
Oh, one, Bluemont, and the one bef, one just before, the school district hosted, uh.
Oh, um, the foundation building.
Yeah, the foundation building, so we'll check with them.
Case.
I think change.
All the hotel places and. Seeing we'll be bringing a car well before the chair, who I presume will be Mr. McKinley, but yet to be determined is the one that always runs the meetings when we have them, and so. That's pretty much all the chair has to do, so.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we hosted in twenty-one, but we did it virtually, so.
It was, it was Zoom, so, and since then, it's been Bluemont Hotel, Rock and Case, Rock and Case was what I was thinking of, Vivian. Uh, K-State Union, K-State Union has said that we can use them again, but I've just had so many comments on parking and.
Yeah.
Fight that parking nonsense again.
We appreciate the, appreciate them being willing to, but just because of parking, we just kind of said. We don't think we would prefer that unless the commission really wants that, so. We have the list, and we'll be working on it, and we'll be bringing it to you, so the commissioners can decide where you want to go. Already started working on it, any changes within minutes, commissioners?
I've moved to approve the minutes of the July twenty-second meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
We're moving to second to approve the minutes from July twenty-second meeting of the rally county commission as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any agendas look okay, commissioners? Any items for next week's press conference?
Just gonna remind everybody on the first, it's up north and it's at six thirty and not six, and that's, so I've got a prior meeting that's. Kind of going right up against that six o'clock hour, so I don't have to be rushed.
Sounds good. Next commissioners, we have Vivian Labo on the monthly communication update.
See what we got here.
I was gonna say, Commissioner McKinley is probably ready to go with it, grab that thing, if you don't pass it around.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. We'll shoot really soon. She knew there's issues up here in mind.
Sure.
Thank you. They were asking, why is it going here?
This is where you open this up, and it has prize-winning.
Prize-winning what?
Got a jar, it didn't save.
It didn't become the favorite day by having broccoli.
We got chips.
I like broccoli, but that's.
I used to like broccoli, so carefully.
Don't you broccoli clean?
As he gets a preside here at the front. Or why would you like that?
Have you done your, um, well, what were you, um, judging this year?
Stones.
Did you do that already?
By Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking of, it's nice to be able to eat cookies again. It's.
I eat too many cookies, so.
I don't, I don't know. Granddaughter has anyone this year, I don't know, but they're.
If I have one on my powder, I eat them, honestly, I have to put them in the freezer, but that's not good either.
Every now and again, it's, uh, you know, if I'm at Walmart or Dylan's or something, I'll. I'll pack, you know, peanut butter cookies or M&M's cookies in my. They look so good, I don't need them, but I'll buy them, well, I'll eat them, I don't feel bad about it.
The mission circle.
It is, it is. There's just some battles in life you can't win.
And yet.
You have an M and M.
This is interesting, M and M's is kind of a crunchy thing, what it is. You know, the thing with the green M and M's or whatever, yeah.
Going in a rock and hard place because it's Joe's birthday today, and so we rotate, yeah, we draw out a hat each year to see who cooks for whose birthday or brings, and so. Joe got lucky and Ashlyn, who was here, uh, got his name, and Ashlyn is like her mother, and bakes everything from scratch supreme, and so we got. From scratch, kinds of brownies. And then you can definitely tell it's not a box brownie.
That's the way to go.
Yeah, actually, that's what Ashlyn's, uh, career goals are, is to open a bakery at some point, I don't know if she's that much into it.
Mm-hmm. Never go wrong there.
And her mother's, Cindy Kent Cabral's a tremendous cook as well. Everyone feels like, everyone feels like they win the lottery when Cindy gets her birthday, so yeah, I didn't know if Ashlyn could work at all. Hear that, John? I didn't know if Ashlyn could work at all, but Nietzsche could bake.
That's on your application, isn't it?
No, I just had insider information on that one.
Those candy jalapenos that Cindy brought in for Anita's birthday were so good.
And see, I was gone then.
Oh, my God, I literally dreamt about that, and I moved to work and begged Cindy for some, and she gave me a jar. So I'll have some at home. Candy, not, let's say they were sweet. Well, they're candied, so I mean, it's kind of sweet, but they're still, so, did you eat any that day?
No.
Oh, and so, oh, I'm sorry.
She's not offering to bring you.
Yeah, that's sticky too, yeah.
Fine. I'm not bringing them back, you'll have to thank Cindy, okay? Three of my plates are so good. Cindy's daughter, Ashlyn likes to bake too.
That's what we were talking about.
She actually wants to open a bakery, did you know that, Vivian? That's really her career goal.
I think that's really.
You can see that Cindy's daughter. Ashley, Cindy's daughter.
I did.
Didn't either, but, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you guys knew. Mm-hmm. It is.
But I, yeah, that makes sense, see, it was at most.
And her dad Larry Cabral was the one, the project manager for the renovation over in the clerks and treasures office years ago. Larry's a real good guy.
Fall camp will be starting next week. NFL camp started this week, Chiefs already had a fight breakout yesterday.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah, yeah. It did.
It's all over Cadareous Tony and, uh, a little linebacker's just leveling, he's got to do the ball that, he would just.
Kelsey got involved?
Yeah, yeah. That was a laugh. I remember those days in high school.
I'm ready for K-State. Curious to see what it's gonna be like. The offensive coordinators have to be chomping at the bit with all the tools they have and get it to work.
Right? Inter, seeing how the offense kind of changes from Klein to. The Wells and. Yeah, they got.
Yeah, ought to be able to remember that name.
Yeah. I was saying, trying to think of the first name, first and what the last, and it didn't quite come to me.
That was interesting, Gene Kow talking about that, that lawsuit, which still, final finals aren't done, but. Whatever number it's gonna be set, that thought, that I asked him, I said, Ohio State's gonna pay a whole lot more. They got, you know, Texas have double R's, so, so now it's gonna be a set amount, around twenty-two million, each school pays players. Somebody's saying, well, what if you pay them instead, instead of scholarship, then you get other guys scholarships, you know? And they said, do you pay every athlete? On school, or do you only pay the one, because the one, the only, there's only two making money, best, it's basketball and football, I don't want two to make money. So if you do that, then you're getting tired of mind problems, and he said, there's so many questions. It's, that they're still trying to figure it out, because people were asking, I mean, and then, that was one of the questions I'd been asking. He was, he said, you know, you do this, you do that, how do you distribute? And he, the only thing he did say though, if you do it to everybody, and because somebody was saying, well, how many? How many non, how many supports are gonna be dumped by N I L? And he said, they say they didn't have any plans, but some of those schools, you know, like Stanford, you know, we've got fourteen sports. Stanford and Ohio State, some of those places have thirty sports, because they do.
Been seeing they got. Okay.
Yeah, they got all these sports, and he said, I'm guessing they're gonna have to start. You know, testing some of them. He said, it's, you know, even that, and then the NIL, is NIL on top of that, or is NIL comp for that? He said, there's more questions than answers so far.
They have created such a mess.
It's, they, yeah, it's gotten to be such a mess, but.
Well, I just remember, you know, it wasn't too long ago that we're talking about, you know, like the NBA, you know, not. Making them stay in school until they were, you know, sophomores and then going overseas or something, because they didn't want to stay in school. Now it's, now they want to stay in school because they're making more money, you know, than I am.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's why.
They're comparing it with the league, so you can make, you know, WNBA didn't pay that much, she can make more.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Then she, you know.
Well, that's why Caleb Williams from USC stayed in last year, because they were comparing his NIL to Brock Purdy's rookie contract with the forty-niners, and it was like. He's making three and a half million dollars compared to eight hundred thousand, I mean.
The thing that I think they have to control at the college level, though, is. Not allowing somehow limiting, so schools can't attract a kid away just with dollars.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
He talked about that too, it needs to be some kind of a. And I've read some other things that people say that. And I've read some other things that people say that. They should have to sign a con, you know, sign an N I L, but guaranteed that you're gonna be here at least two years, you know?
But I think they also want to back in, need to make it, make it fair, and if that's how these athletes wanna be treated, then we can get rid of you at any time too, if you're not performing.
Yeah, cause you're not a amateur athlete anymore. Well, it's nine o'clock too, so. What, uh, what, Vivian, talk about something else?
Thank you, you mentioned I was gonna be a layup public information officer, um, my monthly communications update. Uh, first, just wanna say thank you for attending the Ashlyn Bottoms dedication ceremony. We had a good turnout there, I, I didn't count, but I was thinking about twenty-five people. And good media representation, we had, um, W I W was there.
Several people at work said, yeah, they saw me on, on the six o'clock news.
Yeah, I appreciate that they came out. It's nice to celebrate, it's good for, uh, morale for volunteers and to let the community know what we're. Doing for them, and this really does enhance the response, um, in that section of the county and along the I seven we pulled for it. They get paged out for accidents and sometimes those accidents cause fires in the fields out there and it's, um, it's gonna. Improve response times.
I think everybody also doesn't realize how much of a challenge this particular fire station was. Um, you know, we started working on it back when Pat Collins was here in twenty nineteen, and then COVID happened, and then. Um, trying to make switches with the land and the insurance and, uh, bonding and everything else, it's just, it was a real challenge, but it's done now. So that's the important thing.
And they did some of the dirt work themselves.
Correct.
The actual volunteers did, so. Pretty good bunch. Um, we have quite a few education campaigns, um, in the works right now, or at, or out there for the public. Um, Wednesday's dump day, um, help prevent mosquito population, mosquito breeding, so just reminding folks to dump standing water from their backyard lots a week. Um, fentanyl education is ongoing with the health department, um, they have also a grant for smoking cessation. And they've got some radio, um. Kind of PSAs, they're not commercials, they're PSAs that are, uh, with, with evil communications right now, so. Always, um, trying to keep the public informed and educated, um, heat safety, of course, is important in the summer. The solid waste, uh, division is out at the fair this week. Teaching people about recycling and household hazardous waste and, um, not to throw lithium ion batteries in. They cause fires, so just out talking to the public, they've got a lot of fun stuff, games about, um. They have objects, is, can you, what, what of this pile is recyclable, just educating people about that and. Some giveaways from K D E Gs and games for kids and stuff like that, so just. Trying to keep the public informed and involved and educated. We're also, um, household, excuse me, not just weeding household hazardous waste, working on musk thistle education. Uh, there's, it was a good year for musk thistle commissions were, were right, um, for, and people saw a lot of that out in the fields. Um, Michael Bowler went on K S N T, he was the guest this month to talk about it. And then we're in the fall planning to do a, a bigger push about, um, spraying and treating musk thistle at the rosette stage. Um, to prevent the next year's, uh, and now I'm not gonna remember what I said, it's not bloom, but it's. At this stage that you see out there, it takes two years to get there, and that's the major seed production that causes the most amount of trouble. Oh, I forgot that I included, there's, there's the now famous Mr. Bowler on K S N T.
Yeah, when I was looking at that in the packet, I actually hit that, thinking it was the actual video. Yeah, actually did, yeah.
Um, but would you have once a month, uh, Friday of the month? And people have been really receptive, um, the department has willing to go talk, it's a, it's a very early morning drive, so I. I often just drive them and coach them along the way and. Um, and then. Uh-oh, I lost my place already, just started. I also. Uh, trying to do the graphics that we post on social media as much as possible, as much as time allows, do them in Spanish as well. And get them verified that this is actually the right way to say.
Can you translate that for us?
Yes, um, sign and test today.
Like we would know if she was telling the truth or not.
Actually, I seen the original slide, I can probably.
Yeah, um, Spanish is the second most popular language in Riley County, uh. We have, it's almost two, it's, it's low, it's almost two percent of households in Riley County with limited English. Um, and Spanish is the most popular language, so, um. The text of Facebook can be presented, so when I type in the body of the message on social media. Or even on our website, you can translate that into whatever language, um, you prefer, so that's a setting that the user. Toggles in, in Facebook, for example, I'm like the text in Spanish and it automatically translates it. But the graphics don't get translated unless we post that information, so I'm trying to do that part. I've got a couple people on staff who do speak Spanish and one, uh, employee in the health department. Who is a translator, so I make sure to check that I'm not saying something that makes no sense. Unless it started out making no sense, so.
There's a lot of people that need to do that in English too.
I, I do have some good group readers in the clerk's office.
Elizabeth is amazing at Spanish, I mean, fluent, but unreal.
Spent a few years on the Peace Corps down, uh, South America, so she knows. Um, also, uh, going back to just kind of events, recent events. Uh, the crowd strikes offer outage, thankfully Riley County did not lose service during, during that global outage. But the treasurer's office, their systems that communicate with the state were impacted, so trying to help with communication about that. They were great at bringing me into the loop and, um. Using their scheduling system, they were able to notify everyone who had appointments. So that people weren't able to show up, and then they just get this appointment, they took some out of their day and helped them. Thankfully, that was only a few days, and they had all systems back online, but it, it was really nice that they were able to contact, uh, customers directly. And then I tried to help, uh, let the general public know if you were planning to stop by, but. Not today. We also. So, um, we had a really important training exercise in July, Commissioner Ford, um, I sent it as an observer. And if you are interested in next year, and observing, I'll, um, I'll send you the information while I have time, um. In this annual training, it focuses on streamlining interagency cooperation during a crisis. They've been doing it for about ten years, and this is, it's a unique thing, not other community is able to bring all of the emergency responders together like this.
I don't think anybody in the region's doing it, so I suppose.
It's, there are some, some programs kind of starting to blossom, they've realized like how important this is because. Firefighters use their machine after the leaves, and if they have a room that's clear. That means something different to different agencies, so they find out those kinds of things ahead of time, learn how to work together, learn, um. How to make, uh, response times even faster and take care of people and during a large scale crisis, hopefully that never arises here. But I feel better knowing that we're, that our emergency responders are training and preparing for that situation.
The other interesting thing is, is when they do this training, it's, it's based off of. Actual scenarios that have actually taken place, so they're actually basing it off of things that have actually happened in real time, so. Makes a training, probably go a lot smoother, but when you come back and base off of, you know, I guess they go back through and. Discuss what they did well, what they did wrong, what changes we can take place, so it's kind of a real life setting.
And it's a little, it's a lot to, to witness, you know, it kinda makes your, it. Makes you think about some things you'd probably rather not think about, but I'm glad that they're getting, they're getting the training they need to be able to do what they need to do. Um, off, in, in a few years, there's, there's been a communications component, we've done mock. News conferences, we've done real news conferences, just talking about the training itself, that didn't happen this year. Um, but I observed two of the sessions and my role was mostly just to. Observe, communicate with the people there and take pictures of our staff. Um, I don't often get a chance to take pictures of EMS staff, um, responding, well, certainly we don't want to show up, but. At somebody's health emergency with a camera, that's not appropriate, but we do get to have some pictures we use for recruiting and training. Of our staff in action, so that's, that was helpful. I also, uh, attended a K A C training from, uh, Department of American Joint Terrorism Task Force. And that was just a webinar, and I tried to, was not able to log in on Zoom yesterday, I had technical issues about that, um. K A C implementing county web accessibility standards training. That just, I, I knew law was signed, um, required, um, ADA. Accessibility measures for all government websites, so we have a couple of years to get that implemented. I'm trying to learn what all, what that means, what the requirement is, and then I'll work with.
Civics plus.
Well, um, probably our staff to those changes, there might be some civics plus too, but. Uh, work with I T and work with legal to understand exactly what you need to do and then get it done. Let's see, but, um. Numbers, little bit of growth, little bit of loss in a couple of, um. Facebook pages, but still decent numbers, growing, that's still on stage. Website, um. So Google is, it seems like every time I check, the definition of unique user or traffic changes a little bit. It's still, um, looking at the list reminds me of how important the website is for communication. Uh, most people who find our website do it just through Google search, organic search, so keeping all those things up to date, easy to find. Um, marriage and divorce not on there this time, so that just used to be the most popular, so I don't know what that means, but it's interesting to me. For my own sake, I like to remind myself of communications goals. Kind of my purpose here and what I'm doing is why, and, um, of course, always trying to build and maintain trust, be open and honest with people. We share as much information as possible and, uh, just let the community and, you know, the voters know what we're up to. How, how they can participate, how, how they benefit from the services, uh, try to get ahead of misinformation, um. And communicate with folks who might be sharing that or at least, uh, make sure that we have the correct information out there available. And then just adapting to the changing media landscape, we use, people get their information through a variety of different tools, there isn't just one channel. So trying to push information out in a lot of different ways, and the FEMA course, uh, that I attended, um. About hazards and alert warnings. Close, um. The, I think the most important takeaway I got from that was about this phenomenon called milling, so. So if you send somebody an Everbridge alert that. Tornado warning, you need to take action, what do they do? They go outside and look, they check other, they check other sources, like is this real, and even. Uh, at a meeting or a, a conference have fire chiefs, and I heard this story secondhand from somebody who was there. They were at a meeting full of firefighters, the smoke, the fire alarm went off, nobody moved. Fired in the kitchen, everybody kinda looked around, is this real, is this a drill, I wanna get out. Firefighters still, they're like, oh, I don't know if this is real.
They didn't have a pole to jump down, that's why they were confused.
But there's, there's research available that FEMA has done about how you get people over that hump of. I've given you an alert, you need to do something, to actually doing something. And part of it is getting the information out to several different places at once, so if we say there's a tornado warning. And they check Facebook, oh, they say tornado warning too, and other news says tornado warning and K man's got it, I guess I'll go to my shelter or.
Be like the Little League baseball team in Iowa was actually practicing as a tornado was just going by.
It's a challenge. Challenge to get people to take action, so, um, trying, one of the best ways to. To get people from hearing the information to taking action about it in an emergency, so. If you have ideas. No, it's, it was, it was a great training, and I was, I was grateful to be able to participate, so that's about the size of it for this month. Do you have any questions? Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Vivian. Next commissioner's time for executive session with Mr. Holman.
I move the county commission, including Chair of Circle Work, Flash Chair and the County Commissioner Hopey recess into executive session. On potential litigation with Plancy Holman, County Counselor, and Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor, Attorneys for the Commission. Which we, meeting privilege and attorney-client relationship, an exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, the open meeting.
We're gonna take the entire time?
Yes. The meeting resumes the county commission at nine fifty A M. Ryan Fosford, Daniel Johnson will be consultants. Amanda Webb, Planning and Development, Rich Fargo, Rutherford County Clerk, Brittany Phillips, Budget Finance Officer. John Elman, Director of Public Works will be present during portion of the executive session.
I'd second that.
It's been moved in second of the. At the county commission moving to executive session on potential litigation, um. The open meeting to resume the county commission chamber at nine fifty A M. All favor.
Good meeting and slide.
Okay.
I move the board of county commissioners to the executive section.
I would second that.
The board of county commissioners to the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the record reflect actions will be taken consistent with the consensus reached in the executive session.
Uh, I'll second that.
But move this second is, records reflect actions shall be taken consistently with the consensus reached in the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, commissioners.
You're not really happy.
Okay. Cheers, it's making a noise.
Yeah, just sitting here, of course I have it closed, but... Well, if it blows up.
It's fire, shortly.
Well, uh, oh, you're... Happy belated birthday too, by the way. Appreciate it. You're not hurt. Well, it was yesterday?
Yeah. This week, or just last week?
Apparently it'll give us older. I was listening to Sirius this morning, they were saying some album I listened to is thirty years old, and I'm like, that says me feel old.
Okay, well, good morning, folks. So, Raleigh County Rural Water District has made an application for Raleigh County Development seeking approval for a special use authorization to allow for the construction operation of maintenance of a three hundred thousand gallon rural water, water tower. The subject site is generally located approximately eighteen hundred sixteen feet, sixteen feet west of the intersection of Turtle Creek Boulevard and Thomas Square Road on the south side of Turtle Creek Boulevard. Rural Water District number one has two towers to service its customers. Uh, north tower located at Turtle Creek Shooting Park on Turtle Creek Boulevard and south tower located along Wildcat Creek Road west of Saddle Rock Road. According to officials of the district, capacity has been dwindling over the past decade, as well below what is recommended by the county department of helping the environment. Although, uh, the unsuccessful location and appropriate site which would allow to use existing lines along a certain corridor, discussions were had with the county engineer and the board of county commissioners regarding the location of the new tower on the Parks and Emergency Management Maintenance Facility. Um, the board of county commissioners agree to grant an easement and enter into a long-term agreement with Rural Water District number one for the new tower following the approval of a special use authorization. That's what we're here for today. The new tower will be used in conjunction with the existing north tower, the Turtle Creek Shooting Park, while the south tower along Wildcat Creek Road will be replaced in place. Uh, the overall goal is to double the capacity for existing and future customers of the district. So with that, the subject property has been zoned agricultural since nineteen fifty-eight, but has experienced several modifications to the zoning designation over the years. In June of two thousand six, a special use authorization was approved for the, uh, for the Raleigh County Parks and Emergency Management Maintenance Facility. And then, in January two thousand ten, the subject property was included with other nearby tracks, uh, for an, uh, approved special use authorization to allow seven non-commercial wind turbines, uh, you see there at the site today. Uh, later that year, uh, in September, a variance was approved to allow the increase of the maximum height for wind turbine from a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred and sixty feet. That's a little background on the zoning. Uh, Raleigh County Fire District will continue to serve the site, the nearest fire, county fire station is the Turtle Creek Fire Station located at forty-one twenty highway thirteen. The subject site is located within five road miles of the fire station. Uh, this is the, I'm at Wobeg County Shops, uh, complex provided by Google Earth showing the proposed location of the tower in relation to the rest of the buildings on the site. Point of reference, it shows the intersection of Turtle Creek Boulevard and Marlette here. And, uh, just about walking across, this is the public works building here, Raleigh County Public Works offices and the fleet, uh, services here. And then going further off to the west, this is a Raleigh County, uh, hazard, uh, household hazardous waste. And then the, the site itself with Raleigh County Parks and Department. Uh, this is the three-page site plan again, this shows the site in relation to the overall development of the parent track as well as neighboring tracks. The site plan also shows the proposed tower in relation to Turtle Creek Boulevard surrounding utilities, access to the site, and the existing water main situated north of the tower site. This is a close-up view of the hundred and fifty foot by a hundred and fifty foot area where the tower will be located. There will be an all-weather service apartment area located off the existing accessway to the parent track. Uh, this plan shows how the location of the tower is most efficient, as it will have the ability to tap into the existing water main located, uh, in the south right way of Turtle Creek Boulevard. Both Evergy and Sunflower Electric were contacted regarding the tower's close proximity to their overhead power lines, uh, see if there was going to be any issues. Although the tower could be located approximately a hundred feet away and not in the, their easement, uh, they did not express any concern. Uh, this is a more detailed construction drawing included, uh, with the site plan that illustrate what the tower will look like as, uh, as well as showing the connections for fire hydrants and, uh, setup, structure, lighting. Okay, the request was reviewed with the two thousand nine Vision twenty twenty-five of Raleigh County comprehensive plan, specifically the development guide system, chapter twelve. Uh, the first element of the VGS informs to the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan. Uh, chapter ten of the plan addresses the need for public facilities and services that are necessary to serve the citizens of Raleigh County. It states unquestionably, the future growth and development of rural Raleigh County will depend largely upon the, the extent of public services and facilities available to accommodate such growth. Uh, the availability of water, wastewater, fire protection, and emergency management services, police protection, schools, parks, and other utilities and services affects the safety and quality of life for residents and the economic stability of the county. So the overall goal is to ensure the efficient provision and utilization of public facilities and services with the objective of, uh, appropriately locating public facility in rural areas. This is as effective as, uh, as efficient as possible. And there's an objective there. Number two, the second element is the future land use map. According to the plan, the subject property is not located within a designated growth area. Uh, but that, again, that's, that's for, uh, for other purposes. The third element is the land evaluation site assessment or lease up due to the nature of the request, the lease was not generated. And of course, uh, the, finally, I should say, the hardship factor, the applicant did not express that unnecessary hardship would be incurred if the request were to be denied. But, uh, obviously, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a situation that I think that, yes, if it were to be denied, it would be considerable hardship. So, stat concluded the request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the plan. Now, to consider the site, my first scenario view from Google Earth of the county shops in relation to the proposed tower location. So, I, I took the pictures standing in approximately this location here, and I wanted to just kind of, uh, use the, the sun behind me to take, take a good sight. Let me see what the site look like in relation to the, the rest of the, uh, the county shops complex. So this is standing east of the accessway into the Parks Division track, and that is Parks Maintenance, the, uh, facility, uh, building here. And this is the actual track here, it's already fenced out and not moved. And I just kind of just, uh, yeah, uh, so, turned my, uh, my left. I'm now facing east, you can see this is where it's going to be, and the, the whole back kind of, uh, kind of slopes upward from this point. And upward toward the, the, uh, Turtle Creek Boulevard and there's the sign and the entrance way coming into the site. Okay, staff recommends the following conditions be added to the authorization. Entrance and access road to the tower shall consist of and be maintained with all weather surfacing and accessway getting into the site is already paved. No portion of the site shall be used for storage of equipment, vehicles, materials, or supplies except for during construction. So keep that list fairly short. On July eighth, the Raleigh County Planning Board unanimously reported a recommendation of approval of the request to the board of county commissioners. As it was determined that meets the minimum requirements of the Raleigh County Land Development Regulations, Raleigh County Sanitary Code, and also is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. The board recommended that the request be approved, condition of following, as mentioned, the parking area for the tower shall consist of and be maintained with all weather surfacing. And no portion of the site will be used for storage of equipment, vehicles, materials, or supplies except during construction. Staff also recommends approval of request for the special use authorization to allow for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the three hundred thousand gallon rural water district water tower. Based on the following findings. Proposed water tower will enhance the overall reliability of the system by increasing water storage and decreasing surface interruptions during peak or periods of peak usage and emergencies. The proposed water tower will not pollute the air, land, or water will produce dust, fumes, odors, smoke, or vibration. And it has been determined that the request meets the requirements of the Raleigh County Land Development Regulations, Raleigh County Senatorial, excuse me, Senatorial Code. And is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation of the request, if you have any questions for me, I feel those.
I would make a motion to approve resolution zero seven two five two four, zero seven two five two four. Approving the request for special use authorization to allow for construction, operation, maintenance of a three hundred thousand gallon rural water district water tower as presented.
I'll second. Moved in second to sign resolution zero seven two five two four. Proving the request for special use authorization to allow for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a three hundred thousand gallon rural water district water tower. As it's been determined that it meets the minimum requirements of the Raleigh County Land Development Regulations and the Raleigh County Senatorial Code, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All resign please. Like the power cat. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's blue and red.
Just there was an approval and a denial, so he just wanted to grab my attention of which was which, which I appreciate.
It's always fun to sort that out.
Here's the denial, red deny.
Red deny, okay.
Picture he's saying the right one.
Correct, that's correct. Green for go.
It'd be really bad.
It's this blue thing here.
We'll have to talk to Bob about using K U colors as well, so it's not using the green. Especially on an item with a power cat. At least personally.
I've been I've been saying, you know, I was thinking we could we could draft the rest. Say all these lots of towers, right, that aren't like painted with high school colors or shall have a power.
Sure.
I don't know if it would, I don't know if it would like, you know, survival or talent, but I sure especially be happy to draft it.
There's a trademark or copyright on the power cat.
Yeah.
There is that little thing. Your shirt's ready.
Lori, almost.
Almost.
Got one.
Oh Lori, how you doing?
Okay.
Good.
Okay, less than one minute, we're good, we can go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So my update for for this quarter, I have to go back and look at my last report, I already told you already. So I'll give you an update on our admissions as I've. Expressed over the last year, we did open admissions for the first time in six, six years at Big Lakes. And let's see, that was a year ago May. And we have reached capacity in two of our services, case management, we're now serving over two hundred, we added twelve to our caseloads there. And residential services has added sixteen and we're at a hundred and fourteen in services and we have no bedrooms available in our residential homes at this time. We have added twenty-six to our day and employment programs and we're now serving a hundred and fifty-two. We may be adding a few more to day services, but we are close to reaching our capacity there, especially specifically to the fact that we can't hire additional staff. Our openings right now, where we stand with direction for staff is thirty-four. And until we can make any kind of dent on that, there's no way we can expand services and also residential services. Of course, staff is probably the most important component there, but there are other things that are involved with expanding services, primarily accessible and affordable housing. As you know, our foundation is is focused on providing affordable and accessible housing. And it will require us to fundraise and build another house in order for that to happen and that's not cheap and we're easy. And as I always tell folks, oh, I can build a house, I could do that, but I don't have any staff to go in it, so it's it's they're kind of open. Let's see, also, you know, of course, transportation, we now also have to get another vehicle depending upon the needs of the individuals that would be in services. It may have to be a big excessive bus and you all know how much those things cost.
How long it takes to get them.
How long it takes to get one. I think it was shortly before or shortly after my last report was when we had an accident that involved one of our accessible buses. And I told you that we were struggling to figure out how we're going to replace that, well, I have great news there. We actually found a donor who was willing to to pay for the majority of the cost of the new bus. And between that and our insurance claim, we had that paid for and we're supposed to take delivery in September.
Good, wow, and your share is okay with the the employee involved?
Yes, everything's good there, so and of course, we had some injuries, but everybody got healed up. Very grateful, very grateful, it could have been so much worse than just losing a bus.
Yeah.
But we should be back where we need to be regarding accessible vehicles here shortly. Statewide waiting list, as I said, I would love to be able to expand services because there are going to be people who need services. The legislature passed in the budget, funding for five hundred individuals to receive funding in the state of Kansas. Twenty-two are associated with four counties that are served by Big Lakes. But we do not have the capacity to serve these individuals, so other alternatives are going to have to be come up with for those folks. And our case management department is working very hard to try and find solutions there. The good news, again, that means that the waiting list statewide is under five thousand. Again, it's down at four thousand six hundred and ninety-two as they took off five hundred individuals for for funding.
Curious Lori, how do they prioritize that?
The it's prioritized by the date that they ask for services, so if you asked for services ten years ago, now you're coming up on the waitlist, yeah.
Almost aged out in that in that category, didn't you?
Well, and unfortunately, because the the waiting list has been around for twenty-three years. People have learned that the earlier you get on the waiting list, even if you don't need services now. Probably going to need it in the future and so it's kind of a little bit of a gaming of the system. So when you look at four thousand, you know, six hundred and ninety-two on the waiting list, how many are actually needing services now, I can't tell you, have no idea. Because that's the way the system is worked and you can't blame parents for for doing that, you know, trying to anticipate. That, you know, I would say, you know, if if you have a child that reaches the age of ten, I'd get them in as soon as possible. Cause you're looking at eight, ten years from now when they graduate out of special ed programs and so forth for for needing the services, so. I I wish we'd have better data, it would be really nice to know how many of.
For as long as you've had a waiting list, you should be able to have that data at this point in time, honestly.
You would think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm going to talk a little bit about data collection here in a little bit, so the federal government's getting involved with that. Our race the roof campaign, we are at fifty-three percent, we reached our million dollar mark, the two million dollar campaign, we have phases one and two completed and paid for. So very excited about that, we are now working on our last three phases, which involves remodeling of our haze drive facility, which of course hasn't. We haven't done anything since nineteen ninety-six, so there's a lot of things that need to be done out there, but we will not begin any kind of work until we raise the funds. So of course, our first two, the first one was the roof that had to be replaced and we couldn't wait to raise the money in order to do that. But fortunately, we do have all that paid for. And you asked about data and so forth, I was going to give you a kind of a brief overview of something I did with my board here a couple months ago. Regarding federal and state changes that are going on. We have a lot of regulatory changes that are coming down and some of it is is good. A lot of it is not paid for, you know, unfunded mandates, especially at the federal level. There's a number of regulations that are affecting a lot of businesses that also affect us, such as departmental labor changes on exempt and non-exempt and what the thresholds are. That's going to affect us, we have this thing called final access rule, it's to improve transparency and access to Medicaid services. And one of the things that is in there is data and consisted of a collection of data from states so that there's parity. And you can understand what that waiting list looks like, what there's going to be certain rules on how they maintain waiting lists. And what my I'm hoping is that we'll get better information on who needs services now, what kinds of services that they're needing, because that is very helpful for planning. And also figuring out how much those services are going to cost and we don't have a very good method, I believe, at state and federal level for that matter for for doing so. We also have a final rule, the Rehab Act of seventy-three was modified to with strong emphasis on integration with community for people with disabilities. So there's some more rules and regulations about that. There's been changes to the Affordable Care Act, which affects some of our services, especially on the finance and quality component, payment transparency. One of the things that I'm looking forward to is the state has to be much more transparent on how they determine rates. And if there's any changes to those rates, they have to justify that it will not impede access to services. For example, if they would for some reason decide to change the funding model, which the state is really doing right now. And it would result in a loss of funds for organizations, they would have to justify that we would not restrict access, well, right now they can't. We are shut down for emissions and a lot of IDV providers around the state are shut down for emissions because we can't take on new clients. And because of that, that restricts access to services, so there's a number of those different kinds of regulations that are coming down. Of course, we will be working pretty closely with some of our clients regarding care and the change in managed care organizations. They have signed the contracts with the state with the three insurance companies, two are the same. Sunflower Health Plan and United Healthcare got their contracts, but Etna is out. Although that my understanding, last thing I read was that they are filing a lawsuit.
Figures.
But who knows where that will go, but they are scheduled to be replaced by Healthy Blue, which is a division of Blue Prosper Shield. And what that means is anyone who has their services paid for by Etna now has to either change over to Healthy Blue or choose another provider. And so we, our case management department has to help our clients figure out what is the best fit for them. And then, of course, as a provider, we have to fill out the figure out the billing systems and and all that as well, so that's going to be great fun. Also, we've got some changes in contract negotiations, we contract with the state and have since the mid nineties. We have a department called the C D D O, it's Community Development Disability Organization. And what that department does is it is the one that determines eligibility for services and those referrals out to service providers. We've been doing it, like I said, for thirty years and we've had a contract with the state to do that and there are twenty-seven organizations in the state of Kansas that contract for these services. Our contract was due to start again July first, we have not been able to reach an agreement with the state. There's a couple of really big sticking points and that I believe we're going to end up going to mediation over. One is the waiting list and they want to put in a requirement that C D Os make sure that everybody has services within sixty days of receiving funds. And there's no way that they can guarantee that. Another is a new assessment model that they want to implement January first, that would also change our funding structure. And the preliminary numbers that I've seen on it, and you know, depending upon the needs of the individuals that you have in services. It can mean that you can get more money or less money. So, you know, as I talked about just a few minutes ago, if you have less money and that's restricting access to services, federal government isn't going to go for that. So that's another big sticking point right now. And of course, they're not going to add money to to the pot and so what I liken it to is it's just a rearrangement of the deck chairs. They're taking the pot of money and what you thought may go someplace else or, you know.
Shuffling of the deck.
Yeah, it's a shuffling thing, so a lot of new regulatory stuff that's coming out, I just touched on a few things. Not a big fan of changing regulations, but we have this stuff that we all have to deal with and we'll we'll get it figured out, so. Any questions for me today? All right, that's my final statement.
Thank you Lori, have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners, actually, I have Mr. Holman for an exact conversation.
Second time we talked about regulations today. Let's go man.
Clancy, how long are you going to want to go?
Twenty minutes, I think.
Okay.
Can I talk to you just a second Rich?
Nope.
All right.
I try to say that every day.
That is one double information.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, that was what I should do, I guess. I didn't, we actually have a hearing or discuss, well, then we are going to have a hearing.
Second.
Yeah, and I'm not in favor of having a hearing, so. Waiting to see what's happening.
I already know what the answer is going to be on that.
I'm meaning to, or have some social.
Yeah. But there's some series of concerts over here, honestly.
They split the stock.
So toxic.
It's so missing, almost eighty percent of the time.
They're arguing about stuff like, you know, they shouldn't have to argue, but it's not even true to begin with. I just, I've learned to just laugh about it, I don't.
I don't get along, I don't get along.
One that I like though, if you don't have anything else to say.
That's the bottom of things, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
I move the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley, and Commissioner Fokie recess into executive session. On potential litigation. With Clancy Holman, County Counselor, and Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor, Attorneys for the Commissions. Which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exceptions to Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting to resume in the county chambers. How long?
Twenty minutes. It's on ten forty, ten forty four.
Oh, yeah, sorry. The open meeting resume in county commission at ten forty. Elizabeth Ward, Human Resource Director, and Michelle Reed, Human Resource Manager, will be present during the portion of the executive session.
I would second that.
They moved and seconded at the, um, county commission recess into executive session. Uh, potential litigation with Clancy Holman, County Counselor, and Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor. Um, which is deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, an exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. With the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at ten forty AM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You think in 10, 15 minutes, whatever.
We are allowed.
They did.
Probably 10, yeah.
Okay, first I move the county commission.
Yes, we're back, we're back here.
I move the board of county commissioners to an executive session.
All right.
They moved it second if the board accounting commissioners come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And you may move that you need to make a new motion. This is.
Do you think you want to go back?
Oh, yeah.
He just wants to punish you.
No, it's not.
For 15 minutes, 10.
Well, make it. So when do we want it? 10:55, just to make sure we got enough.
I like it when the client is ground down.
I move the county commission, including chairman and board, vice chairman, commissioner, Pokie recessed in the executive session. On potential litigation with Plancy Harman County Councilor. Brian Parker, deputy county councilor, attorneys for the commission. Which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship. An exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Open meeting to resume in the commission chambers at 10:55. Elizabeth Ward, human resource director, and Michelle Reed. Human resource manager will present bring a portion to the executive session.
We'll start on that.
They moved it second if the county commission recessed into executive session on potential litigation. It should be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at 10:55 a.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Move the board of county commissioners to an executive session.
I would second that.
Yeah.
They moved it second if the board of county commissioners come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Move record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
What's second then?
They moved it second if the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Oh, I am.
That is, that was the last item of discussion on the agenda today, so. Um, I don't have anything else on this Thursday, so.
Neither.
I move to adjourn the. July 25th meeting.
January, I know we're gonna go back.
You go back in time and adjourn.
Yeah, no, 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 that's not. I can move it second if you're not here until July 25th.